To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregapped, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Rock Hall.
Chris Ng?
Here.
Kramer? Reichtner?
Here.
Henry?
Here. Any audience comment on the agenda items before you? Uh, Brianna's not here this evening. There'll be no redevelopment for the up gate. Uh, we haven't officially, I guess, got our new CDVG person yet, so we'll put that on hold until next meeting. Anybody from SRI?
Sort of.
Oh, let's get through it in a couple of minutes. Nobody from SRI?
Yeah.
Yes, they are.
Okay. Oh, all righty.
I would only have a minimal on the business and economic development committee. We did have the ribbon cutting for Radiance. We are planning to have the business pitch competition in November, and now Maggie's here. And I did notice that two of the other contestants or applicants from the business pitch competition have been successfully placed in other buildings on Market Street. So I think that we have continued success from not just the winner, but from the applicants, and it goes to show us fifteen applicants, three so far are in storefronts. Uh, we can really run with this.
Who were the other two?
Um, Rebecca Streets? Rebecca Streets in where the Cupcakeum Cafe was, and um, Wendy Lloyd with Little Studio Big Art is on the corner of Fifth and Market.
Thank you. In regard to the Albright Council, um, we've had a couple of meetings. We did meet with Senator John Gordner and the Secretary of the DCED. Um, in addition, there was a follow-up meeting uh, with the DCED representatives who reviewed the NPP applications, and they gave us some tips, some ways to, you know, get uh, to do, to reformat our application for next year, um, to be more competitive. So, we look forward to doing that again, probably in the next month, actually. We'll be looking to reset that. Um, we raised uh, over four thousand dollars during raise the region to the Albright Center. Um, T-Biz is moving forward, which is great. Um, Chris Reese has had his first meeting with the young people this Wednesday coming up. There was an organizational meeting last week, and they hope to put in a grant submission here uh, by the end of April. Um, we're working on some updated committee policies and hiring a new executive director. Uh, we also finalized a RAP card, which um, is gonna outline all of our events to disperse at Wake of Lake, uh, which is going to be um, an outdoor show focused event, so we're going to have um, an RV dealership and a couple other um, vendors like that. So we're hoping to update that event. Um, we'll still have the music and probably a food vendor or two as well. And lastly, the Renaissance Festival was moved to September tenth, so it'll be this fall rather than mid-summer this year. Does anybody have anything for me? Um, it'll be the first Saturday in June. It's on the fourth. It's the fourth or sixth, and it's from four to eight thirty PM.
Thank you. Very much. Uh, Dale, Vacant Alley and Lents Recycling.
Yes, uh, last meeting Ed was here about vacating alley. Uh, we do not have any underground services. Think we all have to kind of look at it. So at this time, I'd like to make another move forward. Uh, he has to have it surveyed. Uh, he loses paying for that, and then he'll come back to the solicitor to be reviewed, and she'll say whether yea or nay to it. So I'd like to...
What are we actually voting on right now? For her to start a survey?
Yeah, just to do the survey.
Right, the final votes after we see the survey, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yep.
Back to the understanding and discussion of that speed, I guess I don't know the survey cost, but it's uh, if we had favorable or unfavorable, it would be at no cost to the city for your reimbursement. Legal expenses, most of the survey costs, it's all the policy. If the city agrees to do it.
That's part of the motion.
Have John recur in the cost.
That segment, and then close out the edition, right? Okay.
Ister?
Yes.
Chris Ng?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Uh, on the new business, I want, I have one quick thing here to add. There's uh, remember last week, we approved that, or one of the last meetings, we approved that memorandum of understanding between SRI and for the Keystone community, but we never passed the resolution. So I need to pass tonight is a resolution, the City of Sunbury authorizing the filing on application for designation as Keystone community with the Department of Community and Economic Development. We've already done it, but we didn't officially pass the resolution. So I'll make a motion, we accept this resolution. I need a second.
Chris Ng?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Noise ordinance waiver, August twentieth. Whereas the Schicklini School District is sponsoring an ALS walk on August twentieth and twenty-first at the Schicklini Football Field, now therefore be it resolved. The noise ordinance requirements set forth in chapter one thirteen of the Code of the City of Sunbury shall be effective as a special exception allowing low-volume noise at the event on August twentieth, twenty-first sponsored by Schicklini School District. I believe that's at the football field, is it right?
And they're going to all the neighbors down.
So there may be some noise, and we're just trying to head off any opposition to that, so.
Will that noise be any louder than the noise we already hear?
Well, there's no noise there. I guess it won't be louder than the football game.
We do hear noise, sir, when there are football games and any other special events, any other special events that are over there. So I'm just trying to find out.
No.
Is this ordinance permitting the noise to be louder?
No.
Thank you.
Kramer? Reichtner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister? Chris Ng?
Yes.
Do we have any minutes up here?
No.
No. Let me skip back here to approve of minutes for the Fire Department, Treasurer, Engineer, Code Office, Public Works, Lady Commissioner. The motion is set. Second?
Second.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Chris Ng?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Approval to pay invoices, Beth?
Uh, on the liquid fuels, we have uh, one thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents for liquid fuel expenses. I'd like to make that an assumption, that we pay that now.
Uh, Reichtner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Chris Ng?
Yes.
And then I would like to repay the vouchers for the general fund of one hundred and three thousand...
That's correct.
That's cheap.
Three thousand ninety dollars and seventy-two cents.
Forty-three. Forty-three.
Forty-three.
Forty-three thousand nine, oh, yeah. Forty-three thousand ninety dollars, seventy-two cents.
Just nine hundred?
No. We have a motion, a second?
Henry?
Yes.
Ister? Chris Ng?
Yes.
Kramer? Reichtner?
Yes.
Tax exoneration, Beth?
Uh, we have two people on the list to be exonerated. One's in jail, one's deceased.
Ister?
Yes.
Chris Ng?
Yes.
Kramer? Reichtner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Audience comment? Any audience comment?
I have a thirty-second, thirty-second briefs to have with Officer Hawkins at the present for the council. I call here to do...
Audience comment? Yes?
Regina Russell, Community Activist. Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, some time ago, I had made an inquiry about the abandoned buildings, uh, and they had the name wire ropes on it, and everybody started yelling out of the audience that people work there. I don't know when the last time anyone on council visited that area, but it's impossible that all of those buildings are being occupied by employees. So to me, in my opinion, one or two of them are abandoned property, that rusted equipment outside. Um, you have wooden doors on what looked like they should be garage doors, broken windows. Hmm, I would like to know, how is the Code Office handling property like that? That, that to me is abandoned property, and how is the city dealing with that? And do you even know who the owners of the property is?
Well, let me ask you this, or tell you this.
You didn't answer my question. That's not a question within a question. I asked two questions.
We know who the owner is.
You do know who the owner is?
I do not know what buildings they use and don't use. If it is a business there...
It's very obvious, Mr. Mayor.
I do not know what buildings they do or do not use. If they use them for storage use and for production...
So you want me to take pictures of the abandoned buildings?
No, I want you, please let me finish my answer. I do not know what buildings they are using in their production, but because it is an industrial site, we will go and find that out for you for the next two weeks, in the next, by the next meeting, to find out how many people are working there and what they're using and what they're not using.
Well, I commend you for that, thank you.
And we can go to the Code Office and find out what we can do.
I appreciate that. That's a good answer. Thank you for that answer.
Any comments? Yes, sir?
I have a couple of questions for you. The rumor has it, have they're gonna shut Sustrehan Avenue down to two blocks, so the car company can build a building on Sustrehan Avenue? Anybody know anything?
There's no such thing. Next question? There's nothing. Go ahead.
Well, he said about, they wanna put a red light somewhere in that area too. I have a picture.
I don't know who you listen to, but why is it like a red light?
They come right from, they come right from the guy up at Front Street Motor.
Jerry Drice.
Okay.
He wants to shut two blocks down on uh, Sustrehan Avenue, plus he wants to shut down, border dust down there.
Okay. When the county was gonna build a prison there, they had intentions of putting a traffic signal on Front Street. Penn Dot would not allow a street to come out, like border dust comes out right on an angle and have a traffic signal sitting there. That wouldn't happen because of safety. That's where that came about. Now, of course, we all know what has happened with the prison, and that site is in limbo. Uh, Mayor and I met a couple of weeks ago. Anyhow, moral story, we have another meeting come up with everybody on council and the commissioners decide what plans they're, they're planning to do. Let us know, because they kept us out of the, the whole sequence. And we found out, like everybody threw the grapevine or we read it in the newspaper.
Another question. Would council please let us know what's going on?
As soon as we know.
Instead of like the county did with the jail site? I mean, we pay taxes, we have a rate of notice.
That's, that's true. That's why we were upset that we were cut out. In fifteen, we were in, in the whole conversation when it was going. After the election, we were cut out. We were shut off.
We didn't find out that they were moving that site until Tuesday morning, ten o'clock. At eleven o'clock, they, they, they had press conference about it, and they had a meeting at eleven o'clock. And that's gospel. That's when we found out the site was going. So they were going to blow it up. They can't hold people in there, how they're gonna hold the person up there.
That's County Commissioner.
Go to the county and ask them.
Excuse me, Jim. Is that a meeting between the, the commissioners and the council then? Would that be a public meeting? If you're all there and attended?
I'm not sure. It's their call. We're just invited. So, I'd like to, when we were notified, the mayor was out of town to have a situation with family, and we were called in, just like Rick said. We knew one hour before anybody else exactly what was going on.
Nothing other than, nothing other than what you're...
Yes, yes, sir.
My name is Dimos Patagouja, someone below there in thirty-seven, the Market Street. Five years ago, I hired a contractor to fix the roof, and he made a sloppy job with the, if you see the, I don't speak very well, Lebanese, but I got the papers to show you. I'm in the court now, cost me over fifteen thousand dollars, and I found no solution. Roof, if I take the cement blocks on the roof, it's gonna be all the way to deliver. So I went in the court, they, they are bringing the specialist for the, for the company, giving the materials, and they found that the, the, the roof is already fifteen thousand dollars damaged. I went to court, the court rewarded me five thousand dollars, and the, the owner of the roof company passed on the, about three, four years ago, passed on, again, the court to get appeal, how, how they gonna say. So I wait, my lawyer, I don't think is my side, and if you see, the contractor is maybe, he not fully smiling me, he's foolish because of his, with the different, uh, different dates and, you know, what I'm gonna find my right?
Rick, you know that?
I got all the papers here.
When you're saying, when you're saying you made repairs to the roof, but the work was poor work, not work.
If you want the roof, the, the roof is gone like this. And before I bought the house, they have problems, and they take cement blocks and wood and protect the roof. Now, if I take the cement blocks and the woods, the roof is gonna fly.
But our concern was, I think, on this last episode, was stuff was falling down onto the sidewalks of the side of the roof, on the building.
This is no problem. I'm gonna fix it. I hired a contractor to fix it. I'm no slam law. But who's gonna protect me? I go to court, spend a lot of money, and voice in the desert.
Well, as far as, as far as the roof work that was done on your roof already, we as a city don't have control over that. You're, you're, you're doing what you need to do.
Somebody, somebody...
Go through the court system. But we will work with you on the other side of this stuff, as long as we see that you're making an effort to repair what we have this last time.
Mike knows.
Absolutely.
I don't deny you to repair that.
But no.
Don't matter how much cost that.
Yeah, but we, I, as first I heard about your roof, I don't know what we can tell you that's going to correct the problems you have between you and the contractor for the bad roof work.
Yeah, but why didn't you call the scandal, the office for the complaint? Because for the first time, he started to fix the roof. I don't like the work he do it. He don't take the old roof, and he, he tried to put the, the new roof on the top and the, on the old one. So I, I go in the court office, I complain to the visa, and visa give me the phone over, say that's, I don't have nothing to do, call the scandal. I call the scandal. Jim saw scam from over there. I don't know what he did, but he signed the roof work is good.
So you're saying our third-party investor, inspector, signed off that the roof is great?
Let me interrupt. He was dealing with our past third-party inspector.
BIU?
Our Kirk. That's Kirk.
Okay. All right, all right. Uh, that was done with a previous inspection company. I don't know. I can bring down our current, our current third-party inspector and have him go to that place with you and tell you what you need, but that's the best we can do. If it was done with, with the previous company...
But if I saw your papers, they got, I signed the contract in July, and he, he said to me, I have only one sleep. He don't give me, he don't give me copy. And after I go to court office, I take a copy from there, I sign, and, and the court office, he say, he say the, the, we made the contract in August first. And if you see the court papers here, the original contract I signed, he put the date on August, August tenth, but I made the contract in July, in July the ten or fifteen.
Mike, do we have the paperwork from BIU? Is that in files?
Yes, Mr. Reichtner, that should be in our property file for Mr. Kugolius.
Okay, well, we'll do that. We'll get them out, review that, and review with the solicitor and see if there's any options legally that can be done.
I got copies on the contract here. You want to give me?
But you know, my concern, Mr. Reichtner, is, is this. Um, he hired a contractor to do a job. We had an inspection agency that came in and signed off on the job. This is really a similar issue between Mr. Kugolius and, and the contractor that worked. I'm not sure what position we are in to maybe do our best to try and help him. I don't know. Well, that's all we're doing right now.
Let's dig it out. Let's get the information.
With the different, with the different days and the different signals.
Contractor's license for the city, wasn't he?
And another thing, when we were on the court, he say, I'm a perfect, nobody make a complaint for me. But when I call him, why he delayed the, the work, he said, I got problem with the goddamn church on the sand dune. I don't know what church it was in, and I mentioned that on the, the court day, and my lawyer no, no pay attention to us here.
Who was the contractor, sir?
Uh, boss, uh...
Boss Insulation and Roofing?
B-O-S-S?
Yes, sir.
Al Lewisburg.
West Mill.
And I asked somebody, and said to me, forget about it. You get in a fight about year ago, year and a half ago, he said to me, he was a commissioner. I don't know if he was commissioner in the, over there in the town to live.
Mike, get the paperwork out. Get the file out.
I would like to ask, and I don't know if the gentleman has, have you filed a complaint with the Pennsylvania State Attorney General's Office?
No, my lawyer, I thought, he is not on my side, you know. At the time, he said to, you know, to sell the building, or you're gonna do for the building.
I don't know much we can do for you, but they'll, they'll definitely look at it being touched.
Yeah, we'll get that out, we'll look at it, we'll let, run it by the solicitor and see, because if, if the work wasn't... Mike refuses license to work here if he doesn't want to follow up.
And about year and a half, a half ago, I don't expect to come and merely to say, and he, he say to me, it's gonna be bad publicity for my building. If somebody hate you and go on the front of the police to complain, the police wanna say to you, no make a complaint, because it's gonna be against you. Come on, give me back.
Well, sir, we'll look at the paperwork, and it won't be tomorrow, because I'm gonna be out of town all day. But, and Friday, Wednesday, we'll look at that, and find out exactly what's happening here, and we'll dig out all the information on the file we can, and we'll get back.
So if you look the history, I'm tired to be a school. I wait seven years, I don't say nothing, but cost me twenty-five thousand dollars a year.
Well, like I said, we'll see, we'll see if we can help you out, all in.
Please. Thank you.
Any other audience comment?
I'd ask you, Mr. Reichtner, if you have a third-party court inspector company working for you, are you legally liable for their decisions?
Uh, I don't know, but they work, they're, they're... Is that what, is that what, is that what Rosie just said? The inspectors that were the third-party inspector on that is no longer doing business in the city. It's a different inspection, a third-party inspecting agency, okay?
Yes.
This inspection agency was created maybe two thousand and twelve from my insurance. This BIU.
He would have insurance, and you should be able to sue him?
Well, not us.
Be between him.
It would have to be the gentleman there. And the liability, the liability, if the decision's made by that third-party inspector, that's their liability. That's why they're, they're inspecting.
If you see the hallways and the, and the cities, everything is fallen down.
Okay.
They destroyed the building.
Okay. Any other comment? Yes, sir.
I'm coming from the East Sunbury Fire Company, regard to the building, it's up in question what the guys done with it. Besides it being fire hazard, it's also becoming a health hazard. Does it have, there's some pictures, stinky molts, and so forth that are living in it?
You have no agreement of sale?
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is what he says, there's no agreement of sale with the other company? Wasn't there agreement of sale one time when they talked about?
Yeah, but we, we made an offer, and now he's thinking around, he wants to raise a question.
That's what I heard.
But, uh...
Mike, uh, how are we standing on the letter?
Um, we did send the letters on a timeframe for repair. I believe the timeframe states fifteen days. Or, I'm sorry.
That's, they'll do the fifteen days.
Yeah, April fifteenth.
Which would be the end of this week.
That's correct. According to Boreana, uh, when we had conversations, we need to send him another letter then, for a short period of time, certified, stating that if nothing is done, then the citation process can...
We can send him a letter for what, five days, seven days?
Uh, she suggests like fifteen, so I'd say by the end of April, if nothing's completed, then we can...
So the next step down is the registered letter is writing.
Correct.
And then, then the, okay, then the citation on the thirtieth, if nothing is...
How many people come into the code office and complain about it?
I don't have, I don't have, I don't know that. I mean, there's, we, we're not only receiving verbal complaints, but we're getting written complaints, we're getting threats, we're getting everything on this property. I mean, this is...
Well, now, now it's becoming a health hazard. I agree with that. The Murphy brothers will draw, or pick up a carpet.
But in the same sense, Mr. Spencer, you have to understand, we have procedures and policies, we have to follow. You know, so we want to follow that, so if we do get into that position, we're, we're right. We're, we're all, you know, so the George or the courts or whatever can't say, I didn't do the procedures correctly.
Yeah, that's a lot.
Now, we talked about redevelopment for a tick. I'm not sure how we didn't get that on the list from before, other than if somebody told us, you guys, that they were negotiating, but...
Well, the negotiations...
That's all, all going.
Well, I'm assuming it is, because...
Okay.
We change the price.
Any other comment? Uh, I do want to give an update on the police department. We're not moving as fast as I wanted, but we are moving. Um, Rob, at the next meeting, I'll be bringing in the name of a professional. We're gonna hire somebody to update the scanning operating procedures and the regulatory orders, which will, of course, include an update on, on the, the technical end of the, of the iPads and the cell phones and, because everything we have written, I don't, I don't think any of them mentions iPhones. So anyway, we're gonna bring that up to date. And also effective as today, I've been trying for six months to get this information, I have not been able to do it. So we're gonna suspend the K-9 program effective today, until I get enough information together to find out that it's worthwhile having. So, right now, our K-9 program is suspended, and in two weeks, I plan on bringing, uh, naming it for some professional people to update our scanning operating procedures and regulatory orders. Uh, next thing on here says railroad cross, cross enclosure. Uh, you know, we've talked about this, the item had to be coverage on that, we had pictures of it. That whole plan from the beginning of that plan, but the discussions in the beginning was also to address some of the blight areas and redevelopment that we're doing in the City of Sunbury. The railroad owns a few pieces of ground, just small pieces of ground, that they do nothing to maintain. Uh, it's my understanding that they don't even want to talk about that ground. I sent them a letter and said that everything will be on hold right now. Uh, we, we need a piece of that ground up in the northern end for a possible industry. I'm just trying to get Norfolk to work with us. If Norfolk wants to work with us, then we're open to at least discussing some of these closures, not all of them, but some of these closures. But I just want people to know, right now, that whole thing is put on hold. Uh, there are tough people to work with in Norfolk Southern, but we need some of that property, the better the City of Sunbury, and we can't just, you know, give them everything that they want without, you know, talking about our needs. So right now, that's gonna be officially on hold.
David?
Yes, ma'am.
Piece of ground in the northern end, where?
It's somewhere around the, uh, the Willhold Building, and I think across, talking across the street, the one, I'm not sure the gentleman owns the one that's across the street, the Willhold Building, the other side of Packer Street.
Where Young Door was.
Yes, yes. Well, that is, is that railroad spur they want to get rid of for some reason, and it's, they don't use them. If they're not using them, I don't, all we want to do is sit down and talk with them, again, to make some impact with, uh, Bimbo or whatever the official name of that...
Oh, they get them out of town though.
No, right now, they have jobs in town. Prison site, and Jim mentioned this, I just want to mention that, you know, we, we know nothing more about it than, than what you people have read in the paper. Uh, I do want to ask Councilman Reichtner to look into the fact, there should be, you know, we have a law that says when you have a fire, that we get X amount of dollars put back aside to maintain that, and we have not received that. And, and I know, at least what I read was like three point seven million, so what I want to do is follow up with Brianna, maybe Ricky, to follow up with Brianna tomorrow and find out, uh, why we don't have the money or what, maybe there's a reason, maybe the way the law is written, there's a reason that we don't. But we, what last week we wanted to do is have that old jail sitting there for the next twenty-five years, so we want to get what's legally ours for us, bro, so we can discuss what they're gonna do with that property.
You can't put them on notice as to the time, if the cops start to pick on them, taking action or that sort of thing.
Uh, Free Mulch, May seventh, from seven to twelve. That's up at the same place, right? take it as a good day that week, look around your own property, there might be a fence somewhere, there's a lot of litter along that, pick that up, just for the general consensus of the city, it's gonna be a huge cleanup day and week, and that's a great program we have down there, so hopefully we can support. We're gonna address that fence out, coming in on 61 at the other end also, the football team's gonna do that. Yes, sir?
When you completed this subject, I do have a question. Over the weekend, I seen in the paper, and it was not dated per se, but there's supposed to be some sort of a tower placed below Chestnut Street, and it has something to do with the railroad? What is that all about?
Yeah, tower. The only contact we've had from the railroad was helped by Case Tower, or North of Case, up to Case.
Over the weekend, it was in the paper about placing one below Chestnut Street, and it was not dated, but it was over the weekend.
The one we were gonna find on was for number of...
Yeah, we worked, yeah, and that's what we're trying to find out, if the city are up to best of town.
Well, this one said below Chestnut Street, Sunbury, it was in the daily item over the weekend.
Yeah, we heard about that.
Yep, don't know anything about that one. Street sweeping will resume regular schedule, April 11th.
Today.
That's today, that's right. So go get your tickets tonight.
I got it there.
Yes?
Sunbury Keys, you didn't say anything about that?
No, it's, it's, we're waiting here back from that.
We were hoping to have some good announcement, but we don't have any announcement yet, so we have, we're just across the...
We had meeting yesterday, and we're waiting here back from...
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
What are they doing in the friendship?
What are they doing? I ask them all the time, I have lawyers.
The litigation's still going on, and nothing can be done until last week.
It's my understanding, they hope that's gonna be directed. We're waiting on that also. Ready?